Yeah, well, and I suppose they there they're like in something called a starfish. You heard that? That it's like a starfish, so there's actually a stoplight in the middle of that roundabout where with your next to the railroad tracks. That's what I heard.
The way they've got it laid out right now.
It's got like five points, and I think that's why they said at one point they had to have a stoplight. And it might be for like emergency tra- traffic coming through and stuff like that. They gotta stop with the entire thing, so it might be like it's tight, I don't know. There's five points off that roundabout. Oh, yeah. It's all. I know you, so you know, I was thinking about down there, was there a sign that says no parking? And there's a tree growing up on that thing. You know, I go down that road every morning, I gotta look up that way. And it wasn't really blocking my view, but it was just because it was there. So I was thinking about doing it, and then the state came through and booted it. I said, well, state, I got some. Yeah, oh, we're gonna be at that bridge down there. That bridge down there at 51, that's gonna be a better start next to.
Let the record show six o'clock, call a meeting to order. Sarah, would you please do the roll call?
Eddie Gokenhour?
Here.
Linda Barnard?
Present.
Eric Goff?
Here.
Good Cannon Norton?
Present.
Tim Lewis?
Present.
Daniel Gant?
Okay, we have a quorum. The next item is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Goff, second by Ms. Norton, to approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have anyone that signed up to speak under the open governmental? Okay, let the record show that there's no one to speak under the sunshine law. Approval of the meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we have about four, five public, four public hearings. We'll start our first one with the lakes at Martinsburg.
The first public hearing tonight is a request for major plan change approval. The project is the lakes at Martinsburg Phase One, Plan Change Number Five. File's twenty-two oh-four dash one oh-two. The developers Banbury Holdings LLC and the engineers Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Apeken District, Tax Map Two, Parcel Thirty-five, and is located along Weaver Lane, approximately half a mile west of its intersection with Williamsport Pike. This major plan change proposes the addition of seven single-family lots on one-point-six acres to be served by public water and sewer. On July sixth, two thousand and four, a variance was requested to include the following: to allow a one-way street with a single parking breakdown lane; to allow parking on one side of a curved pavement section; to allow an eyebrow, modified eyebrow street designed to create a center island between the eyebrow street and the main travel lane; to modify the cul-de-sac requirements to allow a center island; to modify the curving gutter section to allow a modified six-inch curb with a modified roll-top curb and a modified mountable curb; to allow for a modified ditch section with a broad shallow six-inch deep to convey the runoff from the twenty-five-year storm to an underground storm sewer system. The Planning Commission approved all requests with the exception of allowing a six-inch curb for safety reasons. On August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, County Engineer Doug Smith stated that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The major plan change meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the major plan change and advancement to the final plat stage.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, Ryan Perch from Integrity Federal Services.
Thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. This is when the public can make their comments known regarding this section. If you would like to address the commission, now is the opportunity. Yes, would you please come forward, state your name, your address, and your concerns?
Good evening, my name is Ken Tucker. I live one forty-eight Shawford, Shawford Drive, Martinsburg, Virginia. We are concerned that this development in this instance will indeed ensure that, right now, there is additional property attached to this that may cause bush and hiding for criminal activities. And we want to ensure that the backdrop behind this property is also left in reasonable safe condition. Right now, it isn't.
Okay. Do we have any other comments regarding this section? If not, then, Mr. Perch, can you please address gentleman's concerns?
Are you speaking to the undeveloped property, I guess?
Yes.
East of the lot that we're talking about?
Yes.
That you're saying it's not being built? Yeah, I can certainly pass that concern along to the developer, and I'm sure they'll get back in there and try to get the brush cleaned up. Certainly, those, these seven lots are going to clear probably about a hundred feet from the roadway as it is now. And when they get in there, I'm sure they'll clear back a little bit further, but I will definitely pass that along.
Well, what kind of insurances are we gonna get on that? Or is the, is community going to get?
I could pass it along to the developer, and, you know, it's the, it's the residual property to the east. But it's just in a natural state, I wouldn't say it's.
Is it planned for development at a later date?
Not at this time. It could be in their future plans.
Mr. Legal, can we address anything like that?
It's not really part of this plan. It's not really part of this plan.
Right. Okay, so this gentleman's concern is for existing conditions for undergrowth and brush? Have you, have you talked to anybody from?
What about the H O A?
Yeah, the only reason I'm here today is because we found that the developer has not been responsive to the things that are of concern to community and that they have violated some of the county's ordinances already, like concerning some water management. There are sinkholes developing in the lake that are leaking into the aquifer and probably infiltrating the spring water. They went ahead and they filled this, this sinkhole with cement, did not get permit from the county, did not alert the county, has not provided any documentation, all right, to show where they had done anything with this sinkhole, and there are other sinkholes developing. So with that concern, we're considering that this developer doesn't care about what happens to this community.
Okay. County engineer is sitting right there next to you.
Mm-hmm.
I can ask him to address the storm.
Is this Doug Smith?
Yes.
Yeah, Doug Smith, thanks, welcome.
Okay. Doug, can you address his concerns for storm water management?
Yeah, there's, I mean, I can tell you the developments that I'm aware of that have happened out there up until this point. So a few months ago, roughly, there are two amenity ponds upstream with one stormwater management control pond at the bottom. Apparently, all the ponds had been dry. There was a sinkhole that was remediated out there that there was never any notification that D E P, which is required when you remediate a sinkhole, was ever made. We do know that D E P has been involved out here as well as the MS four fans. What, what I have been told is there, there may be a few other sinkholes out there which may prevent these ponds from actually holding any water surface. However, the original approvals for this subdivision, the two northern ponds were called amenity ponds, landscaping, and were not forced stormwater management control. Whether they stay wet or not, unfortunately, the county has no, has no, one way or the other, doesn't matter, I mean, they're, they're landscaping ponds. The control pond, all that we really are concerned with is that the control structure controls the discharge and accordance with the stormwater management. So where the county has been on this, if in fact there are sinkholes, and if in fact they do want a water surface in the bottom pond that were all ready, they would have to provide the material in the ground so that the water doesn't infiltrate. And that's been the question all along, is was it constructed with a liner or was it done? We have not been providing any tests or geotechnical report from the engineer nor from the developer. I did reach out to them, I did ask for that information. We did review the original drawings from two thousand and four, five, six that were presented, and I went through their system design. We have not heard anything else since. As far as in violating stormwater management, I can't say that's the truth, because as I said earlier, the amenity ponds, it doesn't matter to us whether they were wet or dry, they were called landscaping ponds, they had no control structures. The only control structure pond is lower. And there, once again, my interest would be the discharge point from that pond and whether it meets the county's stormwater, stormwater management ordinance for the pre-two and ten-year flow rates from the pond. And as far as I can see, they do.
I am so glad, I gotta stop because you're going too long and too little.
Wait, no, 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 he is explaining.
I, I have to give you some other information.
Well, whenever it's your turn to speak again, let him finish, please.
As far as anything else is going, they do have all this posted, no asphalt surface provided to the county basically. So what was constructed out there, I can't physically say one way or the other. All I have is a set of plans that they're building for. But this thing has been around for quite some time, and the bonds are still there. I can tell you that they exist. There have been no drawdowns, but there are no asphalt yet, there's no information on this one. And so we did reach out to Kinsley, who is the developer, Banbury, and I did reach out to Mr. Fink and ask him, you know, for any of this information. As a matter of fact, I did reach out to them and asked them if they had any information. And I have not received any. Now, I do, I can tell you that Key Dalsen, the D E P, has been out there. I think they are addressing the issue of the sinkhole that was remediated and, you know, reported as a pile for that. But once again, sinkholes happen. Could it have been caused by the water being punged and uphill, you know, as a wet pond? Sure. But, you know, there's a lot of variability there. So before I would start pointing my finger, I would wanna see a little bit more geotechnical there.
Oh, let, let me just see if Mr. Perch can answer any of that. There's quite a bit that he just said. Can you answer any of that? Do you know any of that? I mean, you're the engineer.
Sure.
What do you have here?
Yeah, we have, as Doug said, we have had a meeting on site within the last couple weeks with the MS four to discuss that. And Kinsley is, you know, getting ready to respond to their, you know, concerns, so.
Concerns for the sinkhole or the storm pond or what?
For the storm pond. The sinkhole, as Doug mentioned, was remediated.
Okay.
There have been no other sinkholes located in the ponds at this time.
Okay. Sarah, go ahead now with your.
So to address a couple of things the engineer has said. As a layman, I've read the documents. It does stipulate that these are wet ponds.
Can you get your microphone?
Yes. So I've read the documentation. It does stipulate that these are to be wet ponds. It does stipulate that these are to be amenity, that two of them are amenity ponds. The amenity ponds, as it indicates, is designed to be scenic, aesthetic.
Yeah.
Not dry ponds, not empty ponds, but filled with water ponds. All of the documentation for every one of the residents that moved in said that there would be glimmering lakes that we could walk around. Glimmering lakes that we could walk around. The two ponds, amenity ponds, are empty. There are three, four ponds in all. Two of them are amenities, and two of them are stormwater management, because they have storm management drains going into it. There should have been an impermeable liner in order to prevent the water from leaking, in order to erode the limestone underneath. It doesn't appear that there was such. What hasn't been said, and I'm sorry, Mr. Engineer, that you didn't know this, your county, your stormwater management office has issued a violation against Kinsley, a violation, has also required them to drill a bore to see what's the sediment makeup, to see if indeed there was a liner put in. They have not complied. For the last six weeks, they haven't complied.
Okay, I don't think the county asked of that, that would be.
But Stormwater Management Agency?
Yeah, but they're not.
MS four apparently has asked for that, but they are doing this work in the vacuum without county engineer. You know, they're not keeping me in the loop, basically.
Well, I was told that he was. But you're allowing him to speak during my time? Yes?
Go ahead.
I am very passionate about this, because I represent two-hundred-and-eighty-three residents who are pretty upset and disappointed, not because a sinkhole developed, but because Kinsley has not chosen to do anything about it. All my conversations, he's mentioned every name that I've spent time with. Mr. Allison sat on my back deck four weeks ago, at which time he told me he wasn't aware of any sinkholes. One week later, coming out with his supervisor, he called me back to tell me he had discovered this sinkhole. Mr. Fink, who you mentioned earlier, I've spoken with him on several occasions. He has informed the residents that there'll be water in the ponds once it rains enough. But folks, if you've been following the weather, we've had a wetter summer than you've had in decades, in decades. And before the development started, there was ten feet of water in the pond, ten feet. After it started, there still was about seven feet of water in the, in the pond. As this development continues, there's less and less water in the pond. Three of them are empty. The large pond has, right now, eighteen inches of water in it. It's smelly, it's growing weeds, and it's becoming a swamp. Not to mention that several of us have paid premiums to sit on this body of water. So as it stands right now, this is a really passionate disappointment for the residents. Put yourself in our shoes and think about it. And then also, like I said, there's every indication that there isn't a liner in there, so the water is leaking, and there are sinkholes developing several places, which then does threaten the aquifer and other things that we would be concerned about as citizens. That's where we stand.
Okay, we hear what you're saying. The portion that's before us this evening, though, is what we have to rule on.
I understand.
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Perch is hearing what you're saying, our county engineer is hearing what you're saying, you said you talked with Mr. Allison and whoever else you've spoken with. I don't know who to steer you to that you can get some results.
Yeah, the recommendation that I gave them was, you are the H O A, it's beginning to become a civil matter, because the issue that they're wanting is they're wanting wet ponds in the two amenity ponds above, and the only piece that was reviewed back in two thousand and six, where that stormwater plan was approved, was they looked at it as if the damn breaches in either one of them were, that affect upon the bottom, it did not, it doesn't, in other words, they did not claim stormwater quality because it didn't exist at that time, not to the degree we have it today. So they looked at those as nothing more than something that has a pool surface of water on it and isn't controlled centrally. That was all they looked at those three for. As a matter of fact, the bottom pond, all they really looked at was what we do scientifically in stormwater, they looked at the control structures of the outfall. If it wants to be wet, then it's up to the developer and the H O As, you know, in the future, to make sure it stays wet, that the surface is aerated, that it doesn't, you know, become a diskelette breeding. The county would, that's, that's all of their covenants and restrictions, and the county would not necessarily go in there for anything. As I said, that stormwater quality did not exist when this was approved, not to the degree that it does now.
And yet, in the plan, the post, the pre-design and the post-design clearly stipulate that these were engineered to retain no less than seven-point-two feet of water.
Yes.
And also, okay, at present, we don't control the H O A. Kinsley controls the H O A. It is their responsibility to mitigate the sinkholes and the lack of water in wet ponds. They own and control the H O A, not us. And that's why I'm here, because I need you to hear this, for whatever reason, all right, because others need to hear this, because this is an injustice, and it's millions of dollars that homeowners have invested on something that's not being delivered.
Okay, like I said, we have to deal with this particular section tonight. I don't know how to get your questions resolved. You obviously have tried, and you're not getting anywhere. So I'm gonna look to Mr. Engineer over here to not just pass along, but is there any kind of letter that we can issue to them on behalf of the Planning Commission that would be more forceful about getting these issues from previous years resolved?
I'd have to write one up and let Jeff redo his legal.
Really, this is something that the residents should be talking to a private attorney to deal with these, the company and the H O A, because.
But he's saying that they don't have, that they don't have the H O A as a.
No, but I mean, if the attorney talks to them by filing a civil complaint for ten million dollars, they'll.
So you're suggesting we do that?
I'm just saying you should talk to an attorney to see.
Did you hear that, Mr. Kinsley? Is the company, you guys wanna go? You really wanna go there?
Please, 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 please. Okay, your comments have been received, they're noted in our minutes.
Thank you for listening.
Okay.
Forgive me for the passion.
That's okay, I understand, I understand, I understand, I understand. It is a beautiful development. I was out there just a, a week or so ago, and it's a beautiful development, and they're moving quite rapidly from what it was ten years ago. I can tell you that. Okay, any other comments from the public regarding this section? If you wanna talk about the same things that we just heard, we don't need to hear that again, because it's been clearly noted. Are there any other people who wish to speak regarding this section and our approval tonight?
If not, I'm gonna, the public attorney, be closed.
Second.
Okay, let the record show that there is no additional public comment on this section. Motion to be made by Mr. Goff and second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, Planning Commission, now it's your turn to ask questions.
Mr. Perch, is there any particular reason why this gentleman's, who represents the homeowners per se, even though it obviously hasn't been formed yet, who represents the residents, is there any particular reason why these concerns have not yet been met? Or have they been met?
From what I'm aware, the developer has been talking with MS four and D E P to look into the concerns, and they, like I said, just had a meeting within the last few weeks, so.
Okay, we need some resolution on this, in, in my view. I mean, apparently, this has been going on for a little while. Ma'am, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion that we table this project until our next meeting and give an opportunity for MS four, Integrity Engineering, D E P, County Engineer, and perhaps somebody from the neighborhood to sit down and, and come to a conclusion on what needs to be done to solve these issues. Are you willing to sit down and, and try to?
That, that's beyond my purview, but I can definitely communicate that to the other.
Well, if the project is put on a table.
There's no stormwater engineering involved in this request that's before you.
I'm going to refer to our legal counsel. Do we have the authority to do that, table this, until we get a resolution?
If a member of the commission is concerned that, that it's something that's happened in another section could affect this, this, it's, it's basically, I mean, it can't be there forever.
It can't be there forever, where, tabled?
Yeah.
Can I, can I say one thing though, too? We would have another public hearing with the final plat, so it would, it would come back before you guys, two more times, and there would be another public hearing before those lots would ever be created. This is just to approve the plan that's been renewed by engineering and planning.
Well, but I think I'm hearing Mr. Gokenhour saying he doesn't wanna approve anything until these issues have.
Yeah, I, I would, I don't think.
I think so's the drainage for this section that's before you goes to this pond, you kinda have.
Well, I don't, I don't know where it goes.
But that's where it goes, so what I'm trying to say is, you're justified based on what.
All I'm saying is, you know, obviously, we need to get people to the table and get this resolved. The only way I feel that to do it the right way is to hold the project up for two weeks till the next meeting, and in this two-week interim, that we'll have an opportunity to sit down and try to find some resolution, a path forward.
I'll second you.
Okay, a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff, to table this project for at least two weeks, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Until members of MS four, D E P, County Engineer, Mr. Perch, and possibly a member from the community can get together and get some sort of resolve for the residents who have been faithful in living out there and feel that they are being discriminated against for their proper housing.
Agreed. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, it's been second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passed. All right, we'll see it back, see, hopefully, we'll see something in two weeks, but like Laura says, we will have two more public hearings on this section.
One.
One, you said two.
Well, it'll come before you twice, your final plat determination and then your public hearing, but.
Okay.
We can't get to that point until this is come back before you guys again anyways.
Okay, gotcha. You understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Just to clarify that, some of, forty-five days.
Yes, forty-five days. If we don't get an answer in forty-five days, it automatically gets approved.
Well, you know.
It would just have to be put back on.
You would have to, have to vote on it one way or the other.
I thought it automatically got approved if, if forty-five days was up and.
It has to go back, and then you have to say yes, or that's a period.
It'll always be tabled.
So you have to have a fidelity to it.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Mr. Gokenhour?
I am, I, I just.
We'll let you guys know if, if a meeting hasn't been had, you know, at the next Planning Commission meeting, obviously, if it's not on the agenda, then nothing's been discussed, and we'll let you guys know.
Yes, I would say, I would come back before you and say what the meeting was, what was resolved, it might have been reservation. resolved, if it might have been a reservation or a path forward, because right now, basically all I'm being told is we're under construction. Clay?
Yeah, that's not acceptable.
Well, it, it's, I, I, I don't disagree.
They need an answer, and the only way to do it is...
Is force somebody to give you answers.
Is it okay if we let Laura be in on that meeting, just to occupy her time?
Yeah.
I figured I'd be there anyway.
Okay, all right. We'll include Laura in that meeting. Okay, the next public hearing is Overlook at Riverside.
This public hearing is a request for waiver. The project's Overlook at Riverside Apartments Phase Two, file is 2207-218. The developer is Overlook at Riverside Apartments Two, LLC, and the engineers Frederick Cyber and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map seven, parcel 160.3, and is located on the east side of Williamsport Pike and south of I-81. This project proposes six apartment buildings, two carriage buildings, with a dog park, pickleball courts, a pavilion, and a playground on 7.24 acres to be served by public water and sewer. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section 801, Table 8-1A, subsection seven, for multifamily dwelling apartments requiring 2.5 spaces per apartment, plus one parking space for each on-site employee, plus 10% additional spaces for guests. Staff has recommended, and the Planning Commission has approved, similar waiver requests for parking requirements to be 2.1 spaces per unit, plus one space per employee, plus 10% additional spaces for guests. This requirement is agreeable with current ITE parking standards and is more efficient than 2.5 spaces per unit required by the ordinance. Planning and engineering staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 801, Table 8-1A, subsection seven, to allow for 2.1 spaces, plus one space per employee, plus 10% additional spaces for guests.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Ed Schreiber with Frederick Cyber and Associates.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Now's your opportunity to make your comments known.
If there's nobody, I'm going to move to close public hearing.
I let the record show that there is no one to speak, and I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Schreiber or of the staff?
I just have one question, and I'm just pointing this out, that this is a request for a waiver for parking preliminary. I'm assuming this has not been...
So they're coming through with a major plan change right now, because if you guys remember, they had one section of apartments previously approved, which is probably almost ready for final UNO permits. So this is just an additional section besides the existing apartments, to add a new apartment area, and they're coming through for review with us right now for that.
I just wanna make sure that, you know...
You'll see it again.
The recreational area doesn't get chopped out for some reason. All of a sudden the...
No, it can't.
No, it can't, yeah.
It's part of the PV.
Okay.
The only, and the only concern I have, ma'am, is, is I ask our staff and our engineer to make sure that there's proper turn distances for aerial operations, pumper, ladder truck.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're endeavoring to try to catch up some of the older things that have been out there and try to break them up.
Yeah, but I just know here, it looks very, very compact, you know...
It has a lot of circulation, because there's actually roadways out and around it, behind it, too. So it has a lot of circulation. It's not just dead ends.
Yeah, that's all, that's all I...
And we base the recommendation of the AP of the apartments that exist before us, as well as a couple of the others, and that was based on, you know, actual parking surveys that we did. And that's kind of, you know, we feel that this number covers, we kind of feel that this is a good number to cover everything, whether it's a one-bedroom, two- we, we don't care about that. We feel this number gives every, everything we need in that parking area, so that what we don't want is someone coming off shift at midnight trying to find a parking space.
I just always have concerns about how you get 2.1 parking spaces.
It's the van.
I know.
It's that new van.
It's a van.
I tried to figure out if you have kids or families.
Do you, do you have a recommendation for how you get 2.1 parking spaces?
Like Doug said, it's really, it's just all in the math.
See? Y'all thought I was...
Well, I know it's all in the math, but in reality, how do you get 2.1?
When you back the numbers back into how many units there actually are.
Yeah, but you also say that there's only one person living in those apartments and...
But they're made up. You've been staying age with inflation is the way it is, and what we receive.
Is only one person in every apartment?
Yeah, there is actually a one-bedroom that has more potential for TV, for TV cars.
That's what I mean.
It's all about one employee.
Oh, one employee, okay.
I don't even know if they necessarily have employees at that location. That's just how the, that's just how the ordinance writes it in.
I know, I know.
They assume that they have, you know, ground speakers.
It just always is somewhat amusing to me. Okay, is there any other questions? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Let's now make a motion. We accept staff recommendation for approval of the waiver of Section 801, Table 8-1A, subsection seven, to allow for 2.1 spaces per one space per employee, plus 10% additional space for guests.
I have a motion. Anybody else second? Second by Mr. Goff. I will endeavor to read off that, just come from the staff report. Is that okay with you? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Uh, the next public hearing is Kitchen Orchard Road.
Yes, this is a request for waiver. The project is 119 Kitchen Orchard Road, filed 2207-218. The developer is Stewart BV Properties LLC, Surveyor Site Planning, Design, and Survey LLC. It's located in the Falling Waters District, map nine, parcel 19. The site is located 675 feet east of the intersection of Coontown Road on the north side of Kitchen Orchard Road. The developer is proposing the creation of a 1.37 acre parcel, which is Lot One, to be served by private well and septic, and the creation of a 3.62 acre residue, which is currently served by private well and septic. The developer is requesting a waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance 2009, requiring a two-acre minimum lot size in order to proceed through the preliminary final process. Since the proposed lot meets the minimum lot size requirements of 60,000 square feet for, for single-family dwellings with private well and septic, and will obtain a WVDOH entrance permit, engineering and planning staff recommend approval of the waiver to Section 305.4.1 of the Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance, requiring a two-acre minimum lot size in order to proceed through the preliminary final process. Stormwater management shall be provided in accordance with Article 1. D. 1B of the Stormwater Management Ordinance 2016, should the total impervious area of both parcels exceed 5,000 square feet.
Do we have anyone to represent the project? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Again, opportunity for you to make your comments known, please. Sir, come forward, state your name, your address, and your concerns.
I'm Mr. Thomas Evans. I'm at 83 Kitchen Orchard Road. I'm the next one.
Okay.
Okay. Late person at best here, so I probably have questions as well. Do we not have a two-acre minimum for really good reasons, and this is actually well under that two-acre minimum? You know, we've, I know, I sort of just saw the plans there. You've got enough room there for the septic, enough room for the well, but why do we require two acres? This is neither clause.
The reason we require two acres is to review the project as a preliminary and a final at the same stage. It is not to say that the lot has to be two acres. It's to review the process to allow the project to be under two acres, to get a preliminary and final plat in the same application. Does that make sense to you?
Not really, but...
The lot sizes, and so you gotta think the two acres for process, and that's how it's written into the ordinance. The lot size requirement, that's set by the Health Department. That's the 60,000 square feet. So the Health Department actually allows for a lot to be 1.37 acres and be on private well and septic, while our ordinance requires a two-acre minimum to go through the process that the developer is asking to go through.
Okay. Now, I know a little more about the county I came from, but in this county, and you say they 3.62 reserve, is that like, if the septic system fails, that they've got reserved to put another one? Is that what that is?
I do not know the answer to that, because that's a...
So that, that residue is where that existing house is. They're calling it the residue lot, so it's, it's an existing lot with the house on it. So that'll stay the 3.6 residue, but it's really, it's a primary lot. The lot that would be the 1.37 acres would be raw land, which would then be built upon.
But what Mr. Evans is asking is if the septic doesn't work properly, are they going to be able to utilize that residue to make the septic system work?
No, that's why they have the reserve area.
They have the septic reserve area.
Septic reserve.
Which they could use for that, should the initial septic system fail, but it should, because they might impact us, so it looks like the class one septic will be okay.
Okay.
Is the reserve, what's in the circle here?
They make them set aside to the top.
Well, that's the well. The reserves in the green.
I have colors.
Yeah, mine.
I have colors.
Anyway, so their, their reserve is allowed to be on a completely different lot?
Yeah, their reserve is on their lot.
But aren't they...
Their septic reserve area is 1,000 square feet.
Have you seen that, Mr. Evans?
I, I, I did have here, yeah.
Okay, that's not, you have mine.
I think...
They have an existing septic reserve area and an existing well with the existing house. What they want to do is create a new 1.37 acre lot, and it'll have a new septic reserve area and a new well associated with it that's approved by the Health Department.
Okay. So does Berkeley County require to have, be able to have an alternate septic site?
Yeah, that's why they have the septic reserve area, so...
That's what they...
...it's large enough to accommodate a second system should the first fail.
Okay, that answered my question.
Okay.
All right. That besides the fact we're stacking houses in on my, my neighbor. I guess that's needed here and there, so...
Well, because we don't have zoning in the county, you know, we're kind of limited to subdivision regulations.
But I just thought that being this was so far underneath, it wouldn't be, why are we talking about, so, okay.
Okay. Any additional questions regarding Kitchen Orchard Road?
If there is nobody else on the public hearing, be closed.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Goff to close the public hearing. Second by Mr. Gokenhour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. I have a question regarding, and this might be to Mr. Luellen. You're calling this Kitchen Orchard Road subdivision. Did, did it have to be approved by 911, that name?
We, we don't get subdivision names approved through 911.
Just streets?
Just the streets.
Just the streets. If, if this was like, obviously, it's the name of a public right-of-way, but because it's going through as preliminary final, I don't think we would really scrutinize it. If there was a, if there was a subdivision name that was called like, I think the number kind of, it being 119 Kitchen Orchard subdivision kind of puts it out of being similar to existing subdivisions, but...
As long as 911 doesn't care about a subdivision name, I shouldn't either. Planning Commission members, are you ready for a motion, if you have one?
I'll make the motion. We accept staff recommendations and grant the waiver to Section 305.4.1, Berkeley County Subdivision Ordinance 2009, requiring a two-acre minimum lot size. We'll stipulate that it will obtain the West Virginia Department of Highway permit, make sure that they have entrance, because I'm usually using the right-of-way all the way back to the second.
Not just the fourth, we're using a shared, shared drive.
Shared drive.
They have to have a shared, made this agreement, sir.
It'll be an addendum permit.
Addendum.
And they'll have to add that permit for two lots.
Okay.
With DOH?
Excuse me?
With DA, with DOH?
With DOH, yes, ma'am.
Are you aware of that, Mr. Luellen?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation and to grant the preliminary final plat approval for Kitchen Orchard, 119 Kitchen Orchard Road subdivision. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Okay, the next public hearing is Estates at Edge, excuse me, Edgemore.
This is a request for final plat approval. The project is Estates at Edgemore Phase One, lots one through 19, 50 through 55, and 71 through 89. The file number is 2204-115. The developer is ILA Properties Incorporated. Surveyor is Roberts Land Surveying. It's located in the Mill Creek District, map 14, parcels 15 and 29. This project is located off of Specs Run Road, approximately three miles from Winchester Avenue, and approximately 3.9 miles from Interstate 81. This final plat proposes 44 single-family lots on approximately 70 acres to be served by private well and public sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore staff recommends final plat approval. The final plat surety amount is $2,098,176, I'm sorry, which is currently held by the Engineering Department as a part of the grading permit, permit number 2204-0130. I'm sorry, the project number is 2204-0130.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
We do. Mike Roberts, project.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing, questions or comments, please, regarding this project?
I don't know, I don't know much about it, but I was wondering if there could be a requirement...
Let's have your name, please.
Vicky Hutslar, Polo Green Drive, in Marnesburg.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Hutslar. Vicky Hutslar.
Vicky Hutslar, okay.
Um, I would just make a request that there's so much building being done in the schools. My daughter goes ahead, she's well, and schools are overrun. I know that's not the district we're talking about, but it's going on all over the county. Is there any way to, like, reduce the amount of building that's been going on, maybe make an requirement for something, maybe solar panels on any new buildings?
Solar panels?
Yes.
What would that do for...
Well, it would take some of the burden off the grid.
Take what?
Burden off the grid.
Burden off the grid, okay. But what's that do for the school?
Um, it might not do anything for the school, but it's something.
Well, you said the school districts were overcrowded.
They are.
Yeah, but then you've talked...
It's because there's so much building, and that might be some way of putting a limitation or requirement on new buildings.
Okay. Well, as I explained earlier in the meeting, we have no zoning in Berkeley County, so we cannot stipulate how many, how house, how many houses are on a lot other than through our subdivision regulations. And this does meet the subdivision regulations for lot sizes and so forth. With the schools being overcrowded, we hear that all the time, and, you know, we're aware of that. Unfortunately, we can't control the schools. The, you need to go to the school board at a school board meeting.
We need more schools, that's...
Excuse me?
We need more schools.
You do need more schools, but they don't actually mandate new schools until something is met in their, in their eyes. And maybe Mr. Gokenhour could elaborate on that more than I can.
I really, I can't, because I don't know all those particular details, what triggers their construction.
It's like a traffic study. Nobody does anything to the intersection until it's settled or ruled. Nobody does anything to the intersection until it's settled or ruled.
It's not progressed, it's responsive.
We collect information on new proposed subdivisions, and the school board has actually told us that they don't need that information for us to forward to them, so... We do collect that information, though.
I just wanted to put that idea out there.
Sure, yeah, we're quite aware of it, we're quite aware of it. Like she says, we do collect the information. There was a period of time we were giving it to the school board, and they said they didn't want it.
Well, thank you for having me.
Sure. Any other public comments?
My name is David Holmes, I live at two sixteen Karen Ryan Way. Just had a couple of questions, and I apologize, I've never done one before, so.
Okay.
Out of line or informal, I do apologize.
That's all right, that's all right.
I just had a couple of questions about this development. Is there a turn lane being planned on being installed for this development?
On what road?
It is on Specs Run. This is the entrance to...
I don't...
At the... So the traffic study with the ADTs, it determines that there's not enough traffic being added to...
That's correct.
Okay, okay, and so just to follow up on that, because of the added traffic on Specs Run, which is a narrow road with no shoulder, it is a drop-off on a lot of locations. Has the traffic study been done at Route eleven or Route fifty-one to determine if signals need to be added to upgrade due to the increased traffic because of this development?
Traffic impact study, the DOH requests that that is located, if there are more upgrades required.
Okay, just as an example, McCully Crossing on Giles, Giles Mile, Giles Mill Road, and Inwood Meadows, they both have turn lanes. They both have comparable amounts of housing added similar to this development. So I'm just curious if there are similar houses being added, the amount of them, to this new development? Why is that not being taken into consideration for Specs Run? Number one, and number two, the entrance to this new location is on a very sharp turn. It's not a good spot, it really isn't, so I feel as to be safer. I understand ADTs, I understand engineering, but because of the location, would that be considered? Or has that been considered?
All that was considered under the traffic study that DOH looked at. In the entrance, there isn't much room to do because of the frontage of the property. So DOH selected the best location that they felt was the safest, but they can't deny the man access, they can't make his property worthless. Deny give access will make the property worthless.
I'm not saying deny access, I'm saying within his right of way of off the road at a turn lane.
They flag that, right, that, that area, DOH comes out, and they just decide which location the entrance would be best suited for. So when, when you have applications like this with the certain subdivisions that come out onto DOH roads, they're the ones that determine the entrance location, the upgrades that are required. We look to them for their approvals, and we don't really have any say since it's a DOH maintained in right of way. So anything that was determined with the road upgrades or the entrance location was all determined by DOH back in twenty eighteen, I believe.
So it all comes, so are there specs involved, are there specs with West Virginia involved, the design specs?
Yeah, they look at that. They have an engineering team, and they have, they look at their, their location with site distance, and they look at what triggers the, and warrants, say, a road upgrade or a...
Traffic light?
Traffic light out at a certain intersection, they look at that during the traffic impact study.
Okay, so, just curious, again, I work in Virginia, I'm not familiar with West Virginia. So site distance is a big one. So if you're going westbound Specs, you can't see that entrance. I know what the answer's gonna be, you cannot see that entrance before you hit that turn. So if there is a holdup, some, something, if there's a, an emergency, a medical emergency at that entrance, people will be coming around that turn, and they will hit head-on, or not, excuse me, head-on, they will rear-end people. There is zero site distance.
Yeah, I wish I had a better answer for that.
What's the speed limit on that road?
Thirty-five?
Exactly, and there is enough site distance for thirty-five.
What is the site distance for thirty, thirty-five?
I can't tell you just off the top of my head.
They usually want a hundred and fifty feet, but like, like they said, the, the location of that property, you're probably not gonna get a hundred and fifty feet, but that's... Honestly, we can't give you an answer because DOH makes that determination, and I don't know if they would even really be able to justify where they put the entrance because that's just naturally where the property goes. If you look, that's the only width that they really had to work with. That location was the only location that they had.
I understand what they had to work with, but they need to upgrade it.
I don't know what DOH could have asked the developer to do, or if they would have even, they clearly didn't ask.
Is there a report from DOH stating their determination, how they got to there?
Yes.
It's in the traffic impact study.
Okay, okay, I didn't know that, so, just curious.
And also the entrance permit, it lays out the requirements for the permit, but those are all in the, in the project.
And the line of sight study that was in the design drawings provides, does show adequate site distance for this entrance by ways.
There's just no way it's a hundred and fifty feet.
There is.
It's in my, in my, in my opinion, I understand. Okay, so, no turn lane, ADTs don't determine signal upgrades. For the addition, for the additional, is it ninety-three or ninety-five houses, the school study. Now, I, I've gone to the website, I've looked at county commission, planning commissions, the date, the dates received, the school impact analysis, so how is that going to affect? And again, I haven't done enough research on my own, I do admit that, I haven't had the time for it, but I'm just curious, the school impact analysis, I know my kid's school bus is completely full.
True, everybody's is.
And I, from the woman four, I, I understand that, but if you're adding these houses in, how is that affecting school buses? Are there more school buses being added? I don't know if this is your issue or a school board issue, I understand that.
School board issue.
Yeah.
Understood, okay, I, that's just, I wrote some questions down, I figured that, that's all.
Well, and that's what the public hearing is about. I hope that you understand what we're trying to tell you, some of the things that you're asking us to require we have no authority over.
Understood. That's why I said when I first came up.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
I don't, I don't know the boundaries here, I'm just asking, that's all.
The school impact study was taken back in twenty eighteen, because this project was submitted for like this plan back in twenty eighteen. So whatever the population was back in twenty eighteen, and those numbers is what was used. I don't think the number per house has really changed since the ordinance was adopted in oh nine, but like I said, we used to give that information to the school board, a specific person to use for their growth studies. They told us they don't need it anymore, they do their own, whatever that means, so...
Is escalation taken into account for growth within the county?
That's a question that you have to ask them.
Is that for them all? Okay, okay, I apologize, that's...
Yeah.
Because if it's approved under a certain amount, and again, I, I understand it's through the school board, but it's approved through a certain amount at that time, does escalation in growth within the county, does that take into effect?
You'd have to ask the school.
They don't even understand our numbers, so I don't think so.
Wrong form, I understand.
Yeah, I, I suggest you go, like I told the other lady here, go to the school board, make your comments known to them. They need to hear that, because they're not hearing that from John Q. Public.
Understood.
They don't want our information, because they say they collect their own, and we have no authority over the school board. So I'd suggest that you go to them and, you know, lay your heart out on there and say, what's going on, folks?
Understood.
See if they can give you some sort of resolve.
My next question is, this is well, water, I understand. Is well studied and, taken, has a well study taken place to understand the effects of the well dock for, for the residents that are already there? Is there, I, I don't, I know nothing really about well water, about how the effects of it work, but has that taken place?
They did a hydraulic study.
Geological study for the subdivision, and it came back okay.
Okay.
It predates me, but it was done.
It was done.
Okay, excellent, okay, thank you. Is there a noise ordinance? What are the working hours?
Seven AM to, I believe, nine at night.
Can we tell them to stop working at six AM? Is that possible?
We don't, we don't have, we don't control the noise ordinance, that's by the county council.
The noise ordinance, I believe it's actually an ordinance that's enforced by county council, but they would, county council would determine who would enforce that, which would probably be Brian Ross. I've had somebody call and ask me about that, and I sent them a complaint letter, and I haven't received it back.
I saw, I know, I...
But I just need something in writing formal, send to county council, if that makes sense.
If you call in and file the plate with the nuisance ordinance in Specs.
I mean...
I can give you my email address, and you can just send an email, and I'll get it back to you.
I mean, I get, I get pretty early, the, the kids get up obviously later, but it's five forty-five, six o'clock when I get up, and they're gone.
No, like I said, someone, someone else has called and asked, I just never received the, the written complaint back.
Is it daylight at that time?
Barely.
Yeah.
I mean, it's five forty-five, they're firing up equipment, I get it, I work in construction.
Seven to ten.
Six o'clock, six fifteen, I have video, six eighteen, I'm rolling, they're gone, so.
Do you email me, I'll post it to you.
Thank you. I don't mind it, kids mind, that's...
I understand.
Yeah, you wake up with a name, get that early. Just curious, two more things, internet. What is the, is there, are there any upgrades coming for the internet? There's, there's a hub at Quarry Road. I, I literally just got it, there's nineteen ports left. And if there's ninety-five houses going in, and I, I understand that this is not a question for this commission, I get it, but I'm just curious, is there high-speed internet coming through?
You might ask Mr. Gokenhour that, he sets as a liaison to, on the county council for that sort of thing.
And that's not my forte.
I know it's not your forte, but you are on the board.
I can get you in touch with our IT director and see what he knows about internet service.
That's just a general question.
Who's your, who's your internet provider?
Frontier?
Yeah.
I mean, you just got it, but I'm just, I'm wondering, it's, it's okay, it's not the best, but...
How long have you lived there?
Two years.
Comcast starts to come back? I live out that way, Sam Mason Road, so not far from where this subdivision is, and we have Comcast. And they go all the way up eleven, so I'm surprised they haven't jaunted off onto Specs Run or...
I've looked at Comcast, I've looked at Starlink.
Yeah, Starlink.
It's not available, though, it's, you gotta pay now, and...
That's a potential problem, so don't move.
And, and I don't mean to take up too much of your time, actually.
Yeah, you're really allowed, you're really allowed a three minutes, but go ahead.
Oh, I am, you should have told me, I'm sorry, I am sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
The, the one last thing is, there is a, a pond, I was just wondering, I saw the watershed that, that feeds the pond. I was just wondering if there is, what is the, I don't, I couldn't find the ENS plans for the project. I was wondering what sort of protection is in place to protect this pond? It is going to become a part of the new subdivision, but right now, it's right there for us. I was wondering, what sort of protection is there in place for this pond?
What type of protection are you asking about?
I mean, I mean, what sort of silt fences out there, what sort of check-ins are...
They have a sediment, a residential plant that was approved with the preliminary plan that they are supposed to be following. The ponds are to be protected, they aren't using them as control ponds per se. They are just there. Quite frankly, the ponds are more than likely collapsed sinkhole cavities.
Okay, that's just a general question.
And, and the only reason why I tell you that is, I tell you that because of the preliminary plan, if you go and look at it, there are two sinkholes at each pond that aren't...
Do you know anything about that, Mike? Sinkholes in the pond.
Well, sinkholes, next, Lieutenant.
You email me, I'll email you back and send you the preliminary plan, it's like a hundred and fifty pages.
Yeah, I just couldn't find it online, that's all.
Yeah, this is just seven pages, and it's...
Yeah, six.
Yeah, it's really just for the lots, all the details in the preliminary plan, and I'll get you the link for that, and you can look at it, but...
But the ponds aren't protected.
The blue ones, they have to be protected.
But just, I mean, it's just from upstream coming down, that's all.
Yeah, they, they have their sediment, and now those ponds are private. If they decide to use one of those as a sediment basin, actually DEP, and we would allow it, because they're a private pond, they're, they're just a farm pond, they're not wetlands, they're not waters of the state, nor are they waters of the US.
I understand, I live there, and I enjoy them, I something protected, that's all, that's all I'm asking. I understand your, the technicalities behind it, I'm just saying I would like them to stay as they are for as long as they can with the clear water that they have currently, as long as the ENS plans are being followed. Are there inspections being done?
As a matter of fact, there's been several inspections out here in the past couple of weeks.
Are they put up online?
Yes, they are available through the plating, or through the engineering database and plating database.
Because the, the website I visited today, the last, I went through, everything's from twenty twenty. I haven't seen anything updated from twenty, since twenty twenty, so are there...
I think you're looking at the old system, sir, so I can get you to where the...
Thank you.
We switched it over.
I got you, I got you.
Do those ponds, that pond will actually be maintained and controlled by the HOA, it'll be on HOA property.
They're taking it over, I understand, I'm just trying to hold on to that, that's all. Just while, I'm trying to enjoy it for as long as I can.
Yeah.
And I guess the last thing, on the way in, they cut next to the road for the entrance. What's the minute, is it a six to one wedge on stone entrances against the live lane? Is that the rule in Virginia, it's six to one? Right now, it's about a three to one, two to one, it's unsafe, it's a, it's a drop-off. They put baby cones up, I don't know what the regulation size on cones are, but right now, you come around that corner, going too fast, unfortunately, it's too steep with the drop-off. Per Virginia code, or standards.
Is this on Specs Run?
Yes, it's at the entrance.
That's a DOH issue, and we have, I have no jurisdiction within, the DOH allows a three to one slope, and most, most sections over here allow two to one slope off the roadway.
Okay, so when they install that today, I, I, again, just noticed it coming in, no silt fence, it's all silt fence down to install this entrance. Everything, there's a pond, I believe, at the entrance there? Nothing is up, so there's no ENS up at that?
They probably have their silt fence back up tomorrow, but they had to put the tieback in. They had to take the silt fence out to do that.
Okay, but it'll run for rain tonight? There's no, there's no ENS protection?
You don't want to work it after ten PM, do you?
Well, they can work it as long as the hours they're allowed to work, but if there's runoff, it's a big...
If they, if they couldn't get it done today, they'll have to wait till seven tomorrow morning.
That's not an excuse, if there's a big storm, it comes in, if there's runoff involved.
I, I don't think we need to get into an argument here about that.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying facts. That's all. That's all, that's all I had.
Thank you for the information.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for your time.
Sure.
I apologize, it went over.
That's okay, thank you. If we had seven or eight public hearings, I'd have probably had to cut you off soon. Okay, planning commission members?
If there's nobody else on the closed public hearing, sir.
Okay, I'd like to record, show that there's no one else, and I have a motion to close public hearing by Mr. Goff, second by Mr. Gokenhour, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the public hearing is now closed. Planning commission members, how about you, do you have questions?
There are no questions, ma'am, I make the motion to accept staff recommendation for final plat shorty amount of two million ninety-eight thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars, which is currently held by the engineering department.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Goff, to approve final plat contingent upon receipt of shorty in the amount of two million ninety-eight thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Okay, class, staff, legal counsel? You have anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, we are diligently working with your ordinance as we speak.
Are you, though?
I have spent the afternoon looking, and I'm loving it.
You're loving it. Well, you know, you know what your payment was, right?
What's that?
You know what your payment was, and you got it in advance.
I've got anything.
See?
You can rig salad.
You didn't take part of, of the, of the potato candy?
You think I got any of that?
I don't know.
All I wanted the counsel to do is that planning and legal, I've dealt this with the engineering department. All I wanted the council to know is that planning is legal, I've dealt this with the engineering department, so I'm happy to-
Well, you said you wanted it.
I just wanted to go on record that planning's been finished with it for about four years now, so.
Yeah, I heard engineering say, I'm on it.
We are, we, we have, I mean, you know, we've been there. We've had to clean up all planning legal mistakes first, and then doing this right. Now I can work on it, it's been hard. I can tell you stories, you ain't believe it.
I have a motion, I have a member here that says she tired of hearing this, and she's made a motion to adjourn, she beat you to it.
Second.
I know, that's for her, when you were getting ready to do it, what?
I'll second.
Too long for too little.
Okay, at 7:02.